I'd like to call to order the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees meeting for March 14, 1922 at 6:30. Let's rise to the federal leaders.
The federal leaders, in the light of the United States of America, in the republic, a rich family, one nation, and a God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Little call, please.
King Dusty?
Here.
Dan Green?
Here.
Allison McDeveney?
Is Tommy, I see your...
Do you have to move?
Yes.
Ma'am Tomlin?
Here.
And Allison, Chris?
Here.
Andrew, here.
Accept a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved a second. Approve the agenda as presented. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion is accepted. Call to the public.
Public is here.
Welcome.
Public, yeah, I know, I missed last week. Be careful, I can hear you. I see you.
Okay, you may have seen already that we're going to be accepting books anytime now instead of at designated times. To date, we have made $573.40 in cart sales out here. Our general membership meeting will be March 24 at 7:00 right here in this room. And our book sale will be from April 27 through the 30th, right here in this room. So we're looking forward to that.
Normality. Thank you, Laura. We have three items on the consent agenda. I'll accept the motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So I'll second.
The move that seconded is that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Does anyone want to deal with any of the items? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion is carried. Next, library statistics.
Because the principal report in front of you, we're sort of holding steady. Visitors are down a smidge from January of last year, and the full circulations are up. We're in pretty good shape. We're definitely returning to our pre-COVID levels of usage, which is very, very nice. So. Not really have anything particularly noticeable on this report about tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, we're ready for the library director's report.
For general update on Thursday, February 17, we did close at YCMZ to implement weather so that we could get the staff home safely. On March 4, the library returned to the pre-COVID system of accepting used book donations, as Laura mentioned, which is anytime the library is open, donors can place their books on the cart to the left of the circulation desk, and clerks offer them a receipt for those items. We ask that donors with two or more large boxes of books let us know when they think they'll be coming, and we will arrange to have somebody available to help them with their boxes. Next item, due to the current low level of COVID cases in Oakland County, the CDC, MDHHS, and Oakland County Health Department indicate that masking can be optional regardless of vaccination status. After careful discussion and consideration of staff feedback, the department heads and I made the decision to begin Monday, March 14, this is today, that masks are optional at the library for staff and volunteers. This allows people to make the best decisions for themselves based on their personal situation. During the COVID update, we will review the state's response plan for making decisions regarding safety protocols as case levels evolve and change. Also, on Monday, March 14, it's been busy day, ML Schenner Construction began work to repair the hole in the library wall. The first day of the repairs went very well. The demolition is done. The new studs have been installed. The insulation is in place, and the wall is weather tight. The data line and electrical should be reset Tuesday or Wednesday, and the project manager plans to send the drywall throughout Thursday and Friday. The plan is to focus on putting the interior space back together first and as quickly as possible so that the room is usable again. The attention will then shift to completing the exterior and window repairs in hopes of good weather, although they will plan to tent and heat the exterior to work outside if that's what's needed in order to get that work done. Next item, on Thursday, March 17, we will be meeting with library design associates, designer, to finalize the selection of finishes and place the order for the book nook, the community meeting room, the meeting, the team space, and the furniture for the director's office. We're looking forward to getting those ordered and getting an L's project underway. The Friends will hold their membership meeting on Thursday, March 24 at 7:00 p.m., as Laura mentioned. The library staff will make their wish list requests, and Molly Weiner, CIDL's school outreach coordinator, will also present on the project she is working on to rebuild the library's connection to the schools that really has really suffered during the pandemic, and that she's going to rebuild that for us. Once again, the library will be part of the Clarkston Area Youth Assistance's Pinwheels for Prevention Project. April is Blue Pinwheel Month in Clarkston. Pinwheel gardens spring representing the joy of childhood and reminding us to help you feel safe, hopeful, and welcome throughout the community. Last year, the library hosted one of more than the 50 gardens that were in the community that was over 1,200 pinwheels out there.
Wow.
The talking points include positive relationships with caring adults, help young people feel supported, and develop resiliency. This program focuses on the importance of building positive relationships with each other throughout the community, especially with youth. And a small act of kindness can leave a lasting impact. You never know when your small act will be the one that makes a big difference to someone else. And then last but certainly not least, mark your calendar because the Friends Spring Book Sale is April 27 through the 30th. I feel like I'm doing a little bit of repetition with Laura, but just wanted to make sure all of those things are in it, because they're all important.
And it's indoors.
And it is indoors, and it should feel like they have in the past. So fingers crossed.
I'm a little out of breath.
But we're gonna work.
Are you gonna hand the pinwheels here for sale again this year?
We will, and we will have those gardens available. They can be ordered online, and you can do, there are three different garden sizes. There's the size the library does, which is a big yard sign and 30 pinwheels, that's $50. There's a, what we call a Friends Garden, which is a 10-pinwheel garden, and then a smaller sign, which is really designed more for residential and that sort of thing. And that is $20. Or you can do a base with seven pinwheels and a little stake in it, and that is also $20. And all of that money goes to Clarkston Area Youth Assistance, and it is used to support all of the projects that they work on for their mission, so.
And if I can order them online?
Absolutely, I can send you that link if you like.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Any comments, questions? If not, let's move to regular business. Number one, COVID update.
So I'm gonna provide an update. The first thing that you've got in your packet is the update from Michigan about how they're moving forward. And then the other piece that you have in your packet is the CDC's tracking community levels of COVID. And I have two nice little videos, so I'm gonna let the professionals explain all this good stuff to you tonight.
Great deal of promise on the pandemic front. Cases and hospitalizations keep dropping, as has guidance on masks and other measures. But the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is urging us to proceed mindfully. Let's talk about that with the state's chief medical officer, Dr. Natasha Bagdusari. Dr. Bagdusari, good to have you back on the program again. I know you're getting this question a lot. Is the pandemic over? Do we, will we ever get to a point where we can talk like that? Or are we just always gonna be talking about phases of it and where we are on those phases?
Well, the pandemic will end, but what I want to communicate to the public is that it's not a straight line to the finish. It's not that things are going to just keep getting better and better, and one day we won't have to think about COVID anymore. What we're actually thinking about is that as we look at COVID, things will become more predictable. That means that we will see surges in all likelihood, but those surges will become linked to either changes in the weather, so it's possible to see a surge around wintertime when the weather gets cold. It's possible we may see another surge when schools reopen. And I also anticipate seeing surges related to new variants of concern. So we'll continue to see increases in cases, but we're going to look at predicting them in a better way so that the public can know what's coming up and what we're anticipating. But we will see things improving and then potentially getting a little bit worse, and then getting better, and then getting a little bit worse again. And so what we're trying to communicate out is that we expect to see times of higher risk and times of lower risk. And everyone has been on really high alert for the last two years. So what we want to do is to be able to communicate that this is a relatively lower-risk time right now after our Omicron surge. But that things may change.
It's interesting, because we found ourselves last week, we had a couple of days where we were around 1,000 cases a day, which is so much lower than we were, and yet that means a thou- It's a thou-
Oh, dear. Help is on the way. Help is on the way. We have an IT guy here.
1,000 is still a lot of cases a day. Yes. I'm glad someone else has these for COVID.
We head into the month of March with a great deal of promise on the pandemic.
We'll see, too, is to be able to communicate that this is a relatively lower-risk time right now after our Omicron surge. But that things may change.
It's interesting, because we found ourselves last week, we had a couple of days where we were around 1,000 cases a day, which is so much lower than we were, and yet that means 1,000 people are still coming down with COVID each of those days. That's still a lot, isn't it?
It's still a lot, but we have to keep in mind the metrics don't mean the same thing they meant a year ago or two years ago. And it's simply because we have new tools. We have tools that weren't available at the beginning of the pandemic. And there may still be those same numbers of cases, but if they're not causing severe outcomes and death, if they're not overwhelming the healthcare system, and if our schools and other infrastructure is able to remain open, then we are okay.
So you've kind of, the department's kind of created this cyclical graphic for people to understand, where we are either in a pre-surge, the surge itself, or post-surge. And you kind of alluded to this earlier. It's easy to tell when we're in a surge, I guess, and we can understand a little bit about what a post-surge feels like. It's so important, and how much better have we gotten at recognizing what pre-surge looks like? That would seem to me to be the most important component of the cycle.
It certainly is. It's that readiness component, and really telling the public what's coming next. We had a practice run at this with Omicron. And what we saw was, we saw what Omicron was doing across the world and across the country, and so we looked at modeling. And that modeling was able to tell us when we expected to see a peak of cases, how long we expected that to last, and when things would return back to around baseline levels. And our modeling was right on. So I can't say that we will be able to predict future surges with 100% accuracy, but we can think of this as a weather report, where we can at least let the public know what we're anticipating in the next few weeks to months.
One of the tools that you mentioned that we now have is, yes, this widely available vaccine and boosters. Do you think we've got a decent understanding, then, of who will need boosters and how often we'll need them going forward? And how often will those boosters need to be modified for these new variants?
So we have to keep in mind that the virus has only been with us for two years, and the vaccine has only been with us for just over a year. So we both have that long-term data. We will get a better understanding as time goes on, and that's one of the things that we're following very closely.
That's a little daunting. The part of, you're right, I mean, there's still so much about this that we're having to learn. But if you had to look now over the way that we responded, what would you say are the takeaways of what we did not do very well and need to improve the next time?
Well, you know, this is really about engaging with the public and making sure that we have the public trust. So I think having conversations like this, that's one way to really engage and make sure that we're telling people what we would like them to know. But then we also need to have people taking our public health recommendations. So I think that if we can improve our communications and really engage with the public and get that level of public trust back, my hope is that for the next surge that we see, we can signal early when we expect to see it coming, and that people will really heed our recommendations, whether they're recommendations around boosters, or masking, or our other tools. So I think having conversations like this today is very important.
I think it was Crane's Detroit Business that had a piece this past week that I thought was really interesting, and that was a lot of, especially smaller hospital systems, smaller healthcare facilities around the state, may have a really difficult time recovering from what it took to get us through, at least to this point, of the pandemic. Do you have any long-term concerns about healthcare across the state, given what so many hospitals have been through?
You know, it'll certainly take time. I think that not only were the hospitals inundated with COVID-19 cases when we saw that Delta surge with the Omicron surge just back-to-back, but there were so many other cases that they had to cancel or postpone. So it's going to take some time to recover. And so what we really need to do is keep the number of cases down as long as we can, and really hold off the next wave of cases for as long as we can so that hospitals do have a chance to recover.
The other long-term impact that we're seeing beyond needing to keep this thing at bay as these variants come along are what they call the long-haul COVID patients. We still don't know very much at all. I don't think we can generalize yet about who's likely to have the long-term problems. But give me your thoughts about what you've seen so far about long haul.
I think it's very true that we don't have the ability to predict who's gonna have long-term symptoms and who won't. What we actually saw is that people who've had relatively mild disease can end up with long-haul COVID. And again, our understanding about the long-term consequences of infection, we're still learning. We don't know how this will affect people five years post-infection or 10 years post-infection. So we're still really figuring out what some of the long-term consequences could be. And this is one of the reasons why getting vaccinated is so important. We know that vaccines don't stick around in your body for very long. It's just a little messenger that tells your immune system how to respond. And so the long-term consequences of vaccines have been well-studied and well-elucidated. But what we're really concerned about would be long-term consequences of COVID infection, for which we really don't know.
Yeah, and we're still fighting the long-term impacts of misinformation, just what you're saying about the vaccine. We're still, I still see emails about that on a weekly basis. Doctor, thank you so much for your thoughts and your time, and we'll talk to you again soon on the program.
Thanks for having me on.
So the thing that I want, the takeaway that I wanted to point out about that particular one is the state's three-pointed response. So we're either in a surge, we are post-surge, or we're in that pre-surge state. And it's saying right now, we're sort of post-surge, and we're trying to get to that point where we're ready and we know what to do next. So this feels a little bit like last spring when we made masks optional and that kind of thing, but then we started masking again on August 4. So it's just for us, for the board to know that we're kind of looking at this plan that the state has and listening to their weather report, as you put it, so that we can decide what to do and when to do it. So the other video that I want to show you is a really nice explanation of the CDC's county tracker and her COVID cases. So I'm just gonna show you that one as well.
Mask mandates are being lifted, but all this change is leaving people with a lot of questions, like where should we still wear a mask, and where is it okay to take the mask off?
We're here to explain why it's not an all-or-nothing issue, and where you can find information to help guide your mask-wearing decisions. Doc?
Yeah, Kim and Evan, you know, so there appear to be generally three camps when it comes to masking. There are the non-believers who feel it's just theater. There are the genuinely concerned who aren't giving their masks up. And then there's this sort of large middle group who really don't know the best answer. So to help, the CDC has created a simple way for anyone to figure out their local risk. And while it's not perfect, they have clearly invested time and thought into building something that's useful to provide guidance to help us all move forward. The risk level is determined by the CDC in every county in the U.S. by factoring the rate of new cases, the rate of new COVID hospital admissions, and the percentage of hospital beds being used to treat COVID patients. Areas are then given a low, medium, or high level of community risk, basically green, yellow, or orange on a charter map.
You do not have to wear those masks. I mean, please, thank you all. Honestly, it's not doing anything. We gotta stop with this COVID theater. So you wanna wear it, all right, but this is ridiculous.
That was Florida Governor Ron DeSantis at a media event in Tampa, which is located in Hillsborough County. The location is important, because different counties have different levels of risk. Using Florida as an example, there are large areas in the green, low-risk category where masking is not necessary for the average person even when indoors. Looking more closely at Hillsborough County, though, you can see it is still orange, or high risk, meaning it is recommended that people wear a well-fitting mask indoors, in public, regardless of their vaccination status. Now, looking here in Michigan, you can see Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb Counties are all green, while St. Clair County is still orange, or high risk, and Washtenaw County is yellow, or medium risk. Now, relative to masks, green means masks are optional and dependent on your personal situation. Yellow means if you are at high risk for severe illness, you should talk to your healthcare provider about whether you need to wear a mask and take other precautions. Orange means it's time to wear a mask again indoors, in public. And I really just have to say courtesy and civility go a long way. Masking is not always necessary anymore, and the CDC is really providing tools to help us all be smarter about raising our guard when it's necessary, but also relaxing it when it's reasonable. Now, I'm also gonna throw in my personal opinion here. If someone wants to wear a mask, and honestly, there might be medical reasons that just aren't obvious to you, that's their choice. And it's really just uncool to make someone feel awkward if they wear one.
So right, Frank. Is the CDC, though, trying to suggest that you follow their guidelines based on where you live, or where you work, or happen to be at that moment?
Well, you know, that's an interesting kind of quirk in the system. We know, of course, everyone freely moves from county to county, and those green, yellow, and orange, they're not rigid borders, but it's really kind of still helpful to get everyone on a similar page when it comes to precautions. I think at the end of the day, it really comes down to common sense and common courtesy, which unfortunately aren't always that common these days.
Certainly so. All right, Doc, thanks.
So just to bring you up to speed on where we are, I went ahead and pulled up Oakland County, and the video that you saw was a few days old. So Oakland County is still low, but you can see from the map in Michigan, a large portion of Michigan is now in the green area. We do still have this red in this area, but Washtenaw County, and that was yellow that you pointed out, is now also green. So cases are continuing to decline. So this is a much happier-looking country than what we have been seeing up until this point. And given the fact, this actually is the, what it looked like starting on Thursday, and that was the point at which the department heads and I decided that we would allow staff to choose whether or not to mask. And the staff has been great about sort of checking in with their coworkers and, you know, if somebody's masking, would you like me to mask while I'm in this area if they are somebody who's choosing not to mask. So I give a lot of kudos to the staff for doing what makes everybody feel comfortable. Any questions about any of that?
Good.
The mail, we should all be a beautiful. Irving, Nevada. Nevada's all green.
As the CDC said, what's that refresh interval is on the data set?
They have it, it's, different states, I think, have different times that they report in. So I noticed that Michigan changed on the 10th, which is a Thursday. So that must be sort of when people are reporting in, and I noticed a bunch turned green on Thursday. I think there are several places that that's their, that's their reporting time.
I think, too, some of those orange areas are areas that do not have a lot of healthcare facilities. Yeah. And therefore, they are more easily stressed. So it's not like everyone in Northern Maine is ill.
Right.
But they, but there are enough people who are ill that it's taxing the system.
Yes. Well, and also the fact that they're, they are taking into consideration how many beds are available and how full those beds are. Because if you have a really low number of beds available, and even one of them is full, that's gonna really raise your risk level, because if you get sick, they may or may not be able to help you. So, yeah, it does do that. And we are in an area where there is lots of beds available, so that does help us considerably.
How often is the CDC going to publish this?
This is continuous. You can bring up this link at any time, and it's available at all times, and anytime anything changes, it's being updated, so. And it is a link that I sent out to the board. I can resend that if you'd like to have that available to you.
In general, I have found that the CDC's website is easy to use in terms of, there's another map that I've looked at several times trying to gauge whether or not it's time to plan a trip or not. So I find that their website is pretty user-friendly.
And it's gotten better over the course of the pandemic. It started out in the beginning, and it was very, sort of stripped down, and over the course of time, they've added a lot of good things, and they've rearranged them and made them easier to find.
Especially for laypeople.
Yes.
It's a bit of an overload, which is, which I sustain.
Right. So the final, the final thing that we're using, that I did email out to the board, I did not put it in your packet because it's about to change, so I didn't want to publish it out there, and it was making comments about what's on and what's not on there. But the Library of Michigan actually did a really nice document that includes a table of how to determine if somebody is positive, what actions should be taken. And so that is being updated, because all these changes just happened last week. So it's dated January 1, and we were at our meeting, our library director's meeting for the state on Friday, and she said, I'm updating it, and you'll see it next week. So literally, it could be different tomorrow. So I emailed it to you so you could take a look at it, but I didn't want to put it in the packet and have people looking at it and then calling and saying, hey, this is old, it's an old news, so.
But it's reassuring that the, that the state is getting on the same page.
Yeah.
The library systems for dealing with this.
Absolutely. And we are continuing, we were meeting every week, and then we were meeting every other week, and now we're meeting once a month. They have mentioned that if there's going to be a serious situation, that they could call an emergency meeting, but once a month has really been working for us at this point, because they do push information out in between those meetings and keep us in the loop. So it's been really, really good. That support from the state library has been very valuable for us. Any other questions? No?
I think emphasizing how fluid the information is, and things change as more data comes in, so what was true in 2020 is not necessarily the way things are dealt with now. Okay. Let us look at item number two. Way to spend some money.
All right. So this actually comes from a committee of staff members. Many of you know, EVAN is the software that we use. It is our calendar, it is our room reservation, it is our registration software for our programming. CIDL has used EVAN's calendar and room reservation software since 2008, through multiple versions, switching from on-premises to cloud, and through the purchase of the company by Devco. In this time, the program has worked adequately for most of the library's programs, but there has been decline in the support and the updates of the program. Many of the features that the library had hoped would be added, such as responsive web design, support for external locations, tougher room reservations, and easier integration with other services, have not materialized in their upgrade plan. At this time, the library began researching competing products and reached out to several that we had seen used at other libraries around the area. The group looked at library market, ASABET Interactive, Bibliocommend, and Local Hop, and attended demos of the library market and Local Hop product. Taking a look at the different products of the group, we found that several of the Taking a look at the different products of the group, we found that several of the products did many of the things we wanted to do with our calendar. However, we found that Local Hop, a local vendor, had an excellent set of features with which to move forward, including a basic import feature that we can use to bring our current calendar data into the new product, speeding up our adaptation process, our adoption process. I have included the quote from Local Hop for our requested number of rooms that we rent and the level of support from that vendor. And this is a budgeted item, but they did want to bring it to the board so that you could have a chance to take a look at it, since it would be a contract for this purpose.
So this would be an upgrade?
Well, it would be, it definitely has more, more features than what we have now. So I guess in that way, you could call it an upgrade. Yeah, it's a transition to a, a lateral transition to a similar product by another vendor, but the nice thing about this particular product that was, made it more appealing than some of the other ones, was that we actually can transfer, migrate the data from our calendar, because since 2008, we've had all this in the calendar. The staff can literally go back to 2008 through the programs that we did, because the calendar is still there. So what they'll do is they'll migrate the data into this new, so we will still have that archival data back to 2008, which has been really nice, as we've had some turnover in staff. They can say, well, what did you do in 2019 before the, before the pandemic started? What did summer reading look like? How did you do that? And we don't wanna lose that.
Kinda nice, too, that it's somebody relatively local.
It is, and it's a number of libraries that have been test-driving it and really, really liked it, so it came highly recommended.
So if I understand correctly, we need to approve the 1842 for the initial installation, and then the second year of 1193?
It's, yep, it's a little bit different twice the prices go down, because there's an installation fee, like a startup fee for the first year. And obviously, we'll budget that 1193 into next year's budget, but he just wanted you to be aware that it's a little more expensive this year, and then the price goes down next year.
How does it compare price-wise with what we were doing?
It's actually not that different. It's a little bit less expensive. One of the things that this software did that the other one did not do was allow us to adjust the price based on the number of rooms that we rent out. So the one thing that might change going forward is if we, we are not currently using our software, for example, to reserve the study rooms. If we were to do that, the price of this product would go up. We do that in a manual, on a first-come, first-served basis, so that is the one place where this one could potentially be more expensive, but we, in transitioning it to what we're exactly what we're doing now, it is less expensive.
And it may continue to be better, easier to reserve those rooms on a more fluid...
Right now, we like doing it that way, because it, it, what happens when we, we used to take reservations on those rooms, and when we did reservations on that room, on those rooms, we would have people who would reserve the rooms way in advance and then not show up, and, because it's a free space. And so then we would have these locked-down spaces, and we weren't sure if we could release them, and so the first-come, first-served basis on those two rooms really worked best. So I have a feeling we're not going to change that, at least, we have, not in the foreseeable future.
But groups that do wanna use it, they wanna make sure that they're going to get the appropriate room at the appropriate time.
So we do, so we do reserve the business center, the conference room, the community meeting room, these activities room. It's just those little study rooms that only hold one to maybe three. One or two people is comfortable, three is a little bit crowded. But what we were having is, you know, somebody would say they were going to come and, you know, reserve rooms because they were gonna come and study, and then something would come up and they wouldn't show up, and we weren't sure if we could release the room, and it would sit there empty, and so we've discovered first-come, first-served basis best for those things.
Okay. I'll accept a motion.
I move to accept the contract from Local Hop for calendaring and room reservation products at an initial installation cost of $1,842, with a second-year rate of $1,193.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the contract from Local Hop for their calendaring and room reservation products at an initial installation cost of $1,842 and a second-year rate of $1,193. Are there any other questions or concerns? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Thank you, that was a very clear presentation.
Well, I'm not the one who did the project, so you, if you had any super-technical questions, I was gonna be a little bit, little bit, struggling a little bit, because I'm not the one who made it.
But it's always good that the people who will be using the program, administrating the program, are working on the proper selection of the program. All right, let us look at number three.
Okay, so this is about the lawn maintenance quote. At the February 14th meeting, the library board approved the posting of the RFP for lawn maintenance for the 2022 season. The RFP was posted on the library's website, emailed to local contractors, collected from the recommendations of neighboring libraries, the Chamber of Commerce website, and Clarkston, Waterford, and Lake Orion, and contractors who previously bid on CIDL's lawn maintenance RFP. The deadline to submit a proposal was Thursday, March 9th. Results of the process were presented for review. So here's the problem, we only got one bid. It is our current contractor, and we've not been unhappy with his work. We were really hoping to see more quotes, but he's the one that did. So I don't know if it's just that nobody else is interested, if it was the fact that we were doing it so early, that they're still busy snow plowing, and they're not transitioning over yet. But Michigan Outdoor Services has done an excellent job. We're very pleased with the work that they've done. There's no reason necessarily to switch over. We offered it out, and nobody else bid on the hook, so I guess I, I would be our recommendation that we go ahead and, and keep Michigan Outdoor Service. But I didn't wanna just come in here and say, we're gonna do this, and not, you know...
It's, that's not that unusual, it's not a huge contract, and, you know, so some of the, some of the companies just don't wanna be bothered. Price-wise, how does this compare with what they charge people?
It's just, I believe it's just a touch more than what we were paying. I was kind of surprised, I was expecting to see a bigger increase in that based on gas and things like that, but they, I think they just appreciate keeping the business, so they kept it pretty well. We're not a hard job, so.
It looks like a good price to me.
It does look like a good price. I just wonder how, I expected an increase.
It's an increase, but it's a modest increase, so.
I think the fuel surcharge has certainly gotta come into effect at 395 a gallon. We're already somewhere over there.
We're budgeted for it, and we, we did not have any trouble budget-wise. Our lead did actually put, despite that we did not know the gas prices were gonna go up like they did, she did budget for an increase to lawn maintenance, just because we've been trying to do some, some more work out. So one thing that they did put in the, we did mention in the RFP that we wanted a bid on that they didn't include, and I think it's because they wanna quote it out separately. We asked about doing the mulching in the, in the islands and in the various gardens, and they did not include, they just gave us the lawn maintenance, and I think it's because they wanted time to put in a, a more, a more thorough review of that project. They did do it for us this year, though, and they did a really nice job, and they gave us a good price on it, so.
They also probably don't know what the cost is gonna be for the mulch.
I suspect.
That's, that's an item that could have taken a big jump, a lot of them did, a lot of them did, so.
Yeah, well, I believe this past year, what we did to quote it out, they actually just quoted the work. We bought the mulch and had it shifted what we thought we needed for the project, and they just provided the labor to lay the mulch, and I suspect we'll do that again. That way, we assure that we get the kind of mulch that we definitely want.
Okay.
Is there a fuel surcharge? Is it a flat rate, so much per gallon, did they say? This doesn't give you any idea.
You know, it's interesting, because I will admit...
We're gonna have that pretty much all summer.
Yeah, I think you're right, and it's interesting, because I, you know, I didn't think to ask him that, because this came on Thursday. I can definitely ask him about that.
But it doesn't matter who bids, it's gonna be there. The price is gonna be there. It's gonna be there no matter who it is. The main question would be, are they using then 395 as the base price, and if it goes up to 405, then there's gonna be a dime, a gallon surcharge?
I'll ask him how that, how they're going to work that this summer, because we haven't run into it yet with the snow plowing, obviously, the gas prices just went up, and they haven't, they have not contacted us and said that they're doing that yet, so.
They might be just figuring they're pretty much done for the year and not...
Yeah, could be.
...wanna rock the boat or anything.
I will definitely reach out to Scott and ask him about that.
I mean, you know, it's to be expected, a lot of people are talking about surcharges. If it's a reasonable charge based on this is, you know, what we guessed it might go to, and if it goes up, we're gonna pass that, that increase along. But you don't wanna see is if it goes up to $4 when they said 395, they're charging a dollar per gallon extra. You know, you wanna see something that's more in line with what the actual increase is.
Well, that's why I brought it to you tonight, and that's why we do it early, because if you would like to table it tonight while we answer those questions, and then do an approval next month, that's, that's perfectly legitimate and actually kind of what I'm expecting, just because this is a little bit fuzzy, and it's only one quote, so that's why I wanted to kind of put that one...
You don't anticipate that the quotes are gonna change between now and then, do you?
No, but if you want them to clarify those missing pieces before you approve it, that would be perfectly legitimate, so. And he's not gonna change the quote, but you're right, the surcharge is vague, so.
Right, I mean, it's not surprising. I don't object in theory to a surcharge, but I would like to know the mechanics of it.
This isn't, this isn't the result we were expecting, which is why I left it in sort of a, I'm gonna bring it to the board and ask, you know, what's, what's the pleasure of the board in terms of how you wanna proceed? Do you wanna go with what we've got here? Do you want to have to go back and ask him some additional questions, and then you approve it next month? That's why we do it early, so that we have plenty of time to do that, instead of waiting till the last minute when the lawn needs to be mowed, and we're still trying to figure out what we're doing.
And we're still jittering around, yeah. I don't, I don't object to the fact that there was only one quote. I mean, obviously, I love to see more quotes, but on a contract this size, I'm not at all surprised. So that part doesn't bother me, you know, I certainly would be inclined to approve it, but I would love more clarification.
Absolutely.
You don't think a month is gonna matter that much, is it?
No, it's not the time, it's just that, do you want me to, yeah, do you want me to find out what the answer is?
Let's get all the info we can.
Yep.
So do we need a motion for that?
Nope, you can just direct me to get more information. So the question you wanna answer is, what is the surcharge? Are there any other questions you would like me to clarify? I know Arlene wants to know more about the mulching project, just to make sure. She felt that was a little vague, and she was a little disappointed, but, but she was perfectly content if the board was ready to go ahead and assign them the, the mowing project, that that would be fine with her, but she did wanna definitely ask more about that.
Oh, it would be nice to have that all answered, too. I mean, and I can understand, you know, why they're not positive yet exactly how they wanna do that, but...
Well, she was worried they didn't put it in there because they didn't wanna do it at all.
Which wouldn't be...
It wasn't for being possible. And if they don't, then we need to figure out how we're gonna proceed with that, because I, I don't think Arlene is really excited about going out and spraying mulch.
One person, sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot of mulch.
Imagining her out there all day spraying the mulch.
Yeah, I never loved them either.
And it's very expensive. We, we got a quote, and it's almost, it's up significantly from what it was last year.
And maybe that's why they didn't put it in there.
And that, I would guess, is what the reservation is.
Okay.
Because we, we bought a truckload and had it dumped at our house, and we were gonna move it, and they just saw the cost, and we're like, I think I'll think about it.
Yeah, so we want a little more clarification.
Absolutely. And any other specific questions that you would like me to make sure we address before we bring it back next month?
So surcharges and mulching.
And the mulching.
Are those the main items?
Yep, okay, yep.
So we thank them, and we're interested, and we would like just a little more clarification.
Absolutely. Well, they've done good work for us, but I guess it just felt, I'm sure they put it together really quickly, and it just felt a little vague, and so...
You still know we're doing our due diligence.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, let us look at our draft millage language.
Yes, so I'm not actually looking for you to approve anything tonight. This is a first look at the draft language. So the library's millage is due for renewal in 2022. It is proposed to be on the August 2nd primary ballot, which is definitely easier than the November ballot, in terms of making sure people can hear what we need to say. The filing deadline for county and local proposals to be presented at the August primary to be certified to county and local clerks is May 10th of 2022 at 4:00 p.m. So we have time. To begin the process, I'm presenting the draft language for your initial review. Because Board of Review takes place in March, the estimated taxable value for the coming year will not be available until the first week of April. This is needed, it's a legal requirement in the ballot language. The analysts from the Oakland County Equalization Office will provide this information as soon as it is available, allowing the final draft of the ballot language to be approved by the library board at the April 11th meeting. But we can look at the rest of the language tonight, and if there are any questions or concerns, we can address those. So answering, it's the library's legal counsel. She provided both the draft of the language and the necessary resolution for the board to make the approval. The estimated question in that first year, as I said, highlighted in green on the draft, is currently only a rough estimate, and must be updated when the Equalization Office provides the taxable value amounts for the, for the coming year. So let's, let's look at that new ballot language. You don't need to read the whole resolution at this point, I'm sure you looked that over as you were looking into packets. So the proposed ballot language shall the Clarkston Independence District Library, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, be authorized to levy a millage annually in an amount not to exceed 1.1687 mils, which is $1.1687 on each $1,000 of taxable value, which is a renewal of the previously authorized millage that expired in 2021 against all taxable property within the Clarkston Independence District Library District for a period of eight years, 2022 through 2029 inclusive, for the purpose of providing funds for all district library purposes authorized by law. The estimate of the revenue the Clarkston Independence District Library will collect in the year of the levy, first year of levy 2022, if the millage is approved and levied by the district library is approximately $2,200,000. A small portion, approximately $650 in 2021, of the revenue will be subject to capture by the, by the Charter Township Independence Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Okay, so what is that last sentence? That's the first thing that everybody's gonna ask me, so I'm gonna get to it first. There is a brownfield tax capture on the property at M15 and Dixie. So it's that little pointy property that sticks out there. For those who have lived here a long time, it used to be a gas station, and now it is the corner that houses Chris Bailey, Jersey Mike, T-Mobile, all that little club.
The Harsline.
Harsline, yes, thank you, the Harsline, don't wanna forget that one. Okay, so that particular property, the, the tanks that were under the property when it was a gas station after it had been, the longer gas stations leaked and created an environmental hazard. So Oakland County came in and cleaned up that environmental hazard. A brownfield is when they shave off a little bit of the taxes that were collected on that property to reimburse Oakland County for doing that, that cleanup, so that that property would be able to be redeveloped. Okay, so what does that cost us? That costs the library shaved out of our millage $650 per year. If any amount of money in our millage is taken for any other purpose other than library purposes, we have to tell the public in the ballot language. So that's why I said that. We are gonna have to educate people about that. So previously, we had the Corridor Improvement Authority where money was being captured to use to do develop, redevelopment on Sashaba. We are no longer in that tax capture, so that is not being seen here. But this one, that's something that the, the library opted out of, but this is something that we cannot opt out of, because it's environmental cleanup. We don't, we don't opt out of environmental cleanup, nobody does, so.
It looks really bad.
Yeah, well, not just look bad, but, but it's not legal for us to do so, even if we wanna do, but we don't. But we do need to put it in there so that the public knows that there is some money being diverted away from the library for a purpose other than library purposes, so.
I think that because it's such a small amount, and it's so clearly stated, that we should hopefully not run into the issue that we have run into in the past, where that seems to like hang up the whole process, but...
And it's the strategy we used when we required the Corridor Improvement Authority in 2010, 2012, and 2014, was to make sure that the public understood that it wasn't necessarily the tax, their tax dollars specifically. That's what people seemed to resent, is that they didn't want their money that was supposed to go to the library going to anything else. This isn't their money. This is the money that is being paid in taxes by whoever owns the property that has Chris Bailey's and all of that. So that money is being shaved off in order to, to reimburse that, that debt of that cleanup. So that money is being shaved off in order to, to reimburse that, that debt of that cleanup so that the property could be redeveloped.
And that was true last time, too. So it was the properties on Sashaw.
Right.
That were affected, not the general population.
The perception is what you're battling against, and, but in this case, because it's such a small amount, even if I don't understand that it's not my taxes, I'm quickly doing the math and going, oh, that's on the cost of me, you know, three cents or whatever. So I think that because it's such a minimal amount, which is regardless of the perception, it won't be the same issue that the corridor approved.
Actually, I think it will be an issue because we've got the problem right here at M15 in Clarkston Road. We've got a gasoline bubble there, which is why they cannot fix the road. And it's constantly being brought up in the village because people complaining about, well, the rest of the road was fixed, but why didn't you fix that corner? Well, it's the same problem.
Yep.
So I think we're going to need a real clear description, definition, because I can see the village people being very cranky about it.
Okay.
Because they're cranky now about that little piece of road.
It is a bad piece of road.
And it is a bad piece of road. And it's, and it's been like that for 35 years.
For 35 years.
Yes, yes. And it's part of the historic districts, and so the people are very cranky. So I think it could be a bigger issue than we realize.
Well, in this particular situation, in terms of, I guess, I guess the question is, in terms of addressing it, I think that the attorney's goal is to address the fact that it's a small portion of money that is being, I mean, she, she used the options that are available because of course, there's a lot of stipulation about how you can stage it. And by putting this approximately $650 in 2021 was the way that she was making it clear that it's a small thing. But in terms of what, what you're bringing up, I'm not sure how to address that.
I think when we put the message out, those who are working on it, we're going to have to be crystal clear because it's, you know, we're talking about an identified brownfield area.
And it has already been cleaned up and.
But they're going to say, why don't we do this?
And they said, and that is fine, but the library has no control over that.
Exactly.
So that's the, so in this case, you'll see that it does say capture by the Charter Township of Independence Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So if the city wanted to do something like that, then they would need to create their own brownfield on that particular property and.
Yeah. But I think if we had some language that we all had available, so when it gets brought up.
I don't have to sleep on that one.
You know, I mean, it's, I mean, I hear about it from, you know, our mayor at least once a month and.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that's an excellent point. The other item in terms of education is that we are not asking for the 2.25 mils that was allocated to us in the last village. And as it's been rolled back, we are not asking to go back up to where we were.
This is straight renewal. And as Heather has rolled this down, this is the amount given to us by the Equalization Office in terms of where it has been rolled down to. So we're just asking, basically what we're asking the public is, do you like the library service we're providing you? We would like to keep doing what we're doing at the level that we've been doing. To keep it simple.
Have you gotten any feedback at all yet, or people really don't know what's coming up?
We haven't, we haven't put it out there yet. This was all about writing the language first. The people that are, that are in the know understand that it is coming up, that we're doing a straight renewal. And, and the feedback that we've gotten throughout the pandemic is that we've handled things really well in terms of our response and the, and the way we tried to keep service going as best we could and the various things that we were able to do. You know, the patrons would say, well, this is what we need. And we're like, okay. Instead of saying, instead of dwelling on what we couldn't do, we spent all of our time trying to figure out what we could do. And if you need computers, okay, well, how can we do that safely? And when they were ready to, you know, get their library, well, how do you get that safely? When they wanted to come into the building, how do we do that safely? So everything's always been not what we can't do, but what we can do. And this is the same sort of thing, I think, that people are looking at and saying, we want to keep our library safely and be able to make them a clear cut and.
It's just good to kind of see what the questions might be and because, as we all know, all we can do is educate and inform. We can't educate. But we need to make sure our educational materials are as complete as they can be.
Right, absolutely. Well, and the other thing is making sure what we put out there is what we think the public would, would expect and would want us to do. And my feeling is that people like what we're doing and would like us to keep doing it at the level that we're doing it. Anything that you feel in this that I should talk to the attorney about addressing differently or in a, really at this point, if we like the language the way it is, all we're waiting for is that number that would come from the Equalization Office. We would plug that in, and then at next month's meeting, you would do an approval of the language, add, you know, add it, including that new number, do the resolution, which is of course a roll call vote and all of that sort of thing, and then we would move forward. April 11th is the last meeting before that March, or that May 10th deadline. Your main meeting is after May 10th. So anything that we want to think about, talk about, address between now and April, we would want to do that before that meeting because either that or you'd have to call a special meeting in order to prove language.
I think the language is, is pretty straightforward.
That was the goal.
Yeah. And it's, it's not, I, I don't see it as any more confusing than any other ballot proposal ever is. There's always some level of confusion, but I, I think this is pretty, Anne did a nice job as she generally does.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I don't see that it needs any major changes.
Right. Right. Did you talk to Anne, thank her for massaging the, the language for us? She, she worked really hard to stick within those legal guidelines to still make it clear, and that is really a, an art form because there's so much detail that has to be in there, so.
Well, I, I have a question.
Absolutely.
The friends will be putting out their newsletter at the first part of April. Does the board need to approve anything about mentioning the millage for the, so?
No.